Good morning. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing is now called to order. Today is Tuesday, July 28th, and the time now is 9:05. I think that clock is wrong, but that's okay. We can work with it. It's 9:03. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Monday, July 20th, and second notice was issued on Thursday, July 23rd. The committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 289-35COR, sponsored by Senators Amanda Shelton, Senator Regina Biscoley, and myself. An act to appropriate $85,315 from the Unappropriate Manpower Development Fund balance as of the end of fiscal year 2019 to the Guam Community College for the purpose pursuant to Section 7120 of Article 1, Chapter 7, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated. Also, Bill 290-35COR, sponsored by Senator Regina Biscoley, Senator Amanda Shelton, and myself. An act to appropriate $35,636.71 from the Unappropriate Manpower Development Fund balance as of the end of fiscal year 2019 to the Guam Department of Labor for the purpose pursuant to Section 7120 of Article 7, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated. And also, Bill Number 370-35COR, sponsored by Senator Regina Biscoley, authored by Senator Regina Biscoley, co-sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores and Senator Clint Regal. An act to amend Section 26110 of Point 1 of Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring the electronic filing of monthly returns for business privileged taxes, and further requiring the Department of Labor and Taxation to provide notice of the same to the public and to taxpayers. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this morning for the public hearing. I will begin with Senator Amanda Shelton, and then Senator Regina Biscoley, and Senator Telo Tidaway. The general rules for this public hearing, those testifying on behalf of the bills will be recognized by myself. And we have today Ms. Denise Mendiola from GCC, and invited to the panel. She has been invited. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide my leisure staff with written testimony for photocopying. Testimony may be read, and lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. And if you need more time, please feel free to just continue. Testimony shall be confined to the substance. We will be discussing the bill to provide funding to GCC, and that should be an easy one. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony. Once you are done, you are asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the committee. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on, and that you speak into the microphone. You will state your name and your title for the record. We will now begin to discuss Bill 289-35COR, and I ask the author of the bill, Senator Amanda Shelton, to please give her opening statement. Thank you.
Sisius Massey, Mr. Chair, hafadeen, good morning to our colleagues and to those here to testify today. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Chair, and for hearing this bill. Bill Number 289 is in -35COR, is an act to appropriate $85,315 from the Unappropriated Manpower Development Fund balance as of the end of fiscal year 2019 to the Guam Community College for purposes pursuant to Section 7120 of Article 1, Chapter 7, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated. And, Mr. Chair, Bill 289 is really simple. We're going to appropriate this leftover balance from FY 2019 for workforce development and apprenticeship training at the Guam Community College. And the passage of Bill 289 would mean a greater investment in these Guam Community College programs, which means a greater investment in skilled, strong, and sustainable workforce. The Manpower Development Fund was created by Public Law 18-48 for the purpose of funding local manpower training programs on Guam by assessing registration fees on temporary alien labor and fines levied for violations of labor laws. In 2008, the fund received a boost in earnings after a bill which doubled the annual labor fee attached the hiring of temporary foreign workers in H2B visas was signed into law. The fund is grown through fees paid by contractors for every H2B visa worker arrival, with 70% of this directed to the Guam Community College for apprenticeship programs, while the remaining 30% is funneled to the Guam Department of Labor for unemployment surveys and funding the department's Alien Labor Processing Division. Now, the Guam Community College has been a critical partner in preparing our people for work and equipping them with the right skills to enter the workforce. The current appropriation will be leveraged to support the school's paramedic training, which we just heard in the news recently, and truck driving boot camps. The earnings from the Manpower Development Fund go towards a variety of training programs locally that address and alleviate the current labor shortage on island. In the past year, the college has held a handful of successful apprenticeship programs, including the truck driving boot camp and transportation boot camps, both of which have produced over 50 skilled workers. The most recent Manpower Development Fund report from GCC cites 77 active employees hosting more than 350 apprenticeships throughout the island. GCC has demonstrated their commitment to providing training and investing in our labor shortage on island. And I think the Guam Community College for working closely with us to develop this legislation and to ensure that we use every bit of money within this fund to fund the programs at the Guam Community College to benefit our entire workforce. And I just want to apologize, Mr. Chair. I think I said 2008 earlier, but that was a 2018 law. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. We have Denise Mendiola from the Guam Community College. I'm going to safely assume you're representing the president. Ma'am, would you like to speak on behalf of the president?
Test. Test. Hafadee. Manana Sisius. I will be... My name is Denise Mendiola. I am the Assistant Director for Continuing Education and Workforce Development at Guam Community College. I will be reading the testimony in support of this bill on behalf of Dr. Okada, the president of Guam Community College, who is currently off island, and sends her regards. Hafadee Senator Sin Augustin and members of the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. The Guam Community College is in support of Bill 289-35, an act to appropriate $85,315 from the Manpower Development Fund to the Guam Community College. I would like to extend my sincerest appreciation for all the support that we have received for the various training programs at the college. These programs help to train the local workforce that boost our economy. As stated in this legislation, the college has identified the paramedic and truck driving programs for this initiative. Through the various budget laws, the college receives appropriations from the Manpower Development Fund to support apprenticeship training programs at the college. In 2019, the funds collected exceeded the college's appropriation, thus the need for this legislation. For the past couple of years, the college has been working with the Guam Fire Department to develop a paramedic program right here on Guam. Through these efforts, the college is ready to launch the program, which it just did. So, an update, we started our first day on July 22nd, 2020. I would like to recognize my team for their tireless efforts and engagement in getting us to where we are today. Our partnership with the Guam Department of Labor and the Guam Fire Department will help to establish an accredited program at the college in upcoming years. In addition, several months ago, the college successfully obtained a grant from the Guam Economic Development Authority to support the truck driving boot camp. We recognize the importance of building a workforce to support our transportation industry would be beneficial for our island's economy as well. Funds from this appropriation will also support these efforts. As you can see, the college tirelessly continues to identify opportunities for various training programs to support our workforce. As we continue to develop and upskill our residents, they can avail of job opportunities to support and sustain their families. I thank you for the opportunity to appear before the committee this afternoon and testify in favor of Bill 289-35 for Guam Community College.
Thank you, Ms. Mendiola. And please extend my thank you to Dr. Okada for all that she does. I mean, the whole staff at GCC has been outstanding. I don't know how you guys get the energy, but you're doing great, okay? And I'd like to thank you for that, and please extend that to all at GCC. Senator Shelton, do you have anything you want to say to Ms. Mendiola? No? Senator Lee, do you have anything you want to express to...
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good morning, and good morning, colleagues. Thank you very much, Ms. Mendiola, for being here this morning, for representing the Guam Community College. And I just really want to thank you for your continued efforts on behalf of our community to strengthen the development of our workforce. It's definitely been something that we've been focusing on for the last several years in increasing this fee and being able to provide additional resources to GCC. We know that when we do put that, even just one or two dollars into GCC, the return on investment is so great. So, we really just try to funnel as many resources as we can to that area because we really do see the benefits of it, not just with the graduates, but in the way that they impact our community and they help to strengthen our economy. And now, more than ever, we really, really need all of your efforts and all of your work. So, I just really want to give kudos to GCC, to Dr. Okada, and the entire team there. And I want to thank you so much for coming, not just in support of this bill, but again, all the work that you do on behalf of our people. Sisius Massey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Telo. Tidaway. Ma'am?
Sisius Massey, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. Hi, Denise. So, good to see you.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here on behalf of the President Okada. You guys are doing an awesome job over there at GCC, and greatly appreciate it. And I know that any kind of funding you use, whenever you receive it, it goes a long way. You know how to stretch a dollar. You really do. The only thing I have a concern on this, actually, is, Mr. Chair, is with regards to the comments that was made by BBMR. I don't know, Denise, if the president had the opportunity to read the comments made from BBMR and the amount that they're talking about. Because according to BBMR, there's only an estimated $35,502 in this account for the remainder of... It's an unaudited, but that's their projection, you know, for $35,502. So, this is a concern, and they're concerned about the bill, you know, stating this full amount. So, I think the good chair, especially in OFB, you know, has... may have a concern with this because we don't want to look like we're in deficit, you know, or provide anything different. But absolutely, this Manpower Development Fund was made to... Any funding that's in here is made to be given to GCC. I believe it's 70%, and then the 30% goes to Department of Labor. So, that's true to form. The intent is there, and that's what's going to happen. But we want to make sure that we're physically responsible and that we know that that money's there. So, again, just for your notation, I haven't... I don't know if you have that... Okay. So, it's $35,502 is what BBMR is stating that's in this Manpower Development, and it is unaudited. So, it could be a little bit more, or it could be a little bit less. It all depends. So, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up about that. Other than that, I totally support what you're doing, as I always mentioned. And it's ironic because my son is a paramedic, you know? And he got his degree because he went off island and got his degree there. So, total support in GCC. Beba?
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telo. I will take note of that, and whatever funds we can give GCC, we're going to make sure you get it all, okay?
Thank you so much.
And whatever goes to labor, goes to labor. And we're going to hear that next, on the next bill. Senator Shelton, do you have any closing you want to make on the bill?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Denise, for being here to testify on behalf of President Okada and the whole GCC team. As everyone mentioned here, we are very grateful for all the work that you do to continue to prepare our people for the workforce and to give us skilled laborers who will serve our community well. So, we're grateful. And again, Mr. Chair, I ask for the support of you and our colleagues to pass Bill 289 so that we can make this investment in a skilled, strong, and sustainable workforce. Sisius Massey, and thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. That being the last testimony, the committee will continue to receive testimony. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and submit it via email, senatorsjoissinagustine@gmail.com. Sisius Massey for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. The public hearing on Bill 370-35 is now adjourned. It is... Oh, correct... Correction. 289 is now adjourned. It is now 9:22, or 20, and we will now proceed to Bill 370... 290. 290. And we have Mr. Greg Massey and Jerry Tovis from the Department of Labor. And 290 is an act introduced by Senator Regina Biscoley, co-sponsored by Senator Amanda Shelton and myself, an act to appropriate $35,630.71 from the Unappropriate Manpower Development Fund balance as of the end of fiscal year 2019 to the Guam Department of Labor for the purpose pursuant to Section 7120 of Article 7, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated. And I ask Senator Lee to make his or opening statement.
Sisius Massey, Mr. Chair. I want to begin by thanking you for agreeing to hold a public hearing on this bill. And I also like to thank you and Senator Shelton for co-sponsoring this measure. I remain grateful for our partners at the Guam Department of Labor, who are joining us this morning for their continuous support and their efforts to collaborate with this legislature. And I think that this bill is a good testament to that work. Bill 290-35COR is an act to appropriate $35,630.71 from the Unappropriated Manpower Development Fund balance as of the end of fiscal year 2019 to the Guam Department of Labor for purposes pursuant to Subsection 7120 of Article 1, Chapter 7, Title 22, Guam Code Annotated. And, Mr. Chair, this bill is a result of the good work that we've done in a previous term when we invested in developing a local skilled workforce by raising registration fees of non-immigrant temporary workers through Public Law 3498. Senator Shelton mentioned this law was passed in 2018, and this was Bill Number 250-34COR. And it was sponsored by myself and Senators Ada, Therese Terlahi, Senator Jocelyn Augustine, Senator B.J. Cruz, Senator Nelson, Senator Castro, Senator Stevez, Senator Morrison, Senator Munya, and Senator Mary Camacho Torres. Bills 289 and 290 simply allocate these unappropriated funds from fiscal year 2019 to the agencies that need them the most, as provided by law. These funds will be used for workforce development and training programs at the Guam Department of Labor at a time when they need them the most. And we have seen the success of these programs from creating new opportunities for apprentices with construction and ship repair boot camps to strengthening job skills at various workplace training sessions. Mr. Chair, Bill 290 continues our commitment to invest in developing our local skilled workforce. And I'd like to thank the Guam Department of Labor, the Guam Community College, and all of our public and private sector partners for their continued support in this endeavor. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to the feedback from our community and our stakeholders. Sisius Massey.
Thank you, Senator Lee. I'd like to just remind the participants today, the panel, that I know you're here to represent the Department of Labor and testify in support or against the bill. I'd ask that if you have any written testimony, please submit it to my committee. And my leisure staff, we have written testimony, and it'll be photocopied and then provided to all the colleagues here. The testimony should be confined to the substance. We're talking about Bill 290. So, let's just stick to that one, and we can move along. You'll be allowed to present oral testimony, and once you're done, you're asked to remain for questions or for any additional testimony as may be desired by the members of the committee. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form and decorum may be restricted from providing oral testimony and/or may be asked to leave or be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. I would ask the two individuals, Mr. Massey and Mr. Tovis, to just state your name and then your title, and then begin to testify in reference to Bill 290. Sir, I don't know which one's going to be first, but go for it. You're both here.
Manana Sisius. Chairman Sin Augustine. Madam Chair Biscoley. Honorable Senators Shelton and Tidaway. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Gerard Tovis, the Deputy Director of the Department of Labor. We are in support of Bill 290-35COR. Director De La Sola sends his regards. And I'd like to turn over to our subject matter expert, Greg Massey, from ALPCD concerning the MDF.
Good morning, senators. Thank you very much for considering Bill 290. It's a bill to allow us to access very needed funds that were over collections from fiscal year 19. And we're glad that our oversight chair had introduced it because with the previous fiscal year money, we didn't have any access to it, although we had collected it back in the end of fiscal year 19. That money will go to support the activities for alien labor and job training programs. Alien labor in itself is one of the few divisions in the department that, for the most part, self-funds through the Manpower Development Fund. So, the reliance on the general fund is a lot less because of this. Ultimately, 70% of that registration funds that we collect from H2B workers, or actually from the employers of H2B workers, goes to support GCC and the apprenticeship programs that they have. It would also go towards maintaining that activity so that we can continue collecting those funds that GCC needs so much for the apprenticeship programs. Just in support of the bill, we also want to kind of stress that the H2B program is one of the programs that really hasn't been so much affected by the pandemic. But the construction industry is one of the pillars of our, you know, economic engine. And with tourism down, it's really important that we keep the construction industry healthy, not only through continuing to support the H2B program, but to continue supporting the job training programs that we have through GCC and others within the department. We also do support the previous bill for GCC to get the 70%. Our share is only 30%, but GCC gets a lion's share of that. And it's really kind of simple. I do understand that, from watching outside, that BBMR said that there's limited funds in the account, but it shouldn't be. We over-collected, and by law, that money shouldn't go anywhere but back to the MDF. So, maybe it's something we will clear up with BBMR. I was trying to do it on the phone, and then you guys called us in. So, if you have questions for that, I can't really answer that, but I would be happy to get back to you guys later on. And we're open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. And being the oversight on the appropriation, also, OFB, we're going to take note of exactly what Senator Telo brought up on the last bill, and we're going to make sure that the money's there. Once we confirm it, we're just going to clean it up. And if we need to adjust the bill with the amounts, then we'll adjust it. But we want to get the money to where it rightfully should go. GC and yourself, Department of Labor. Need to keep you guys going. You need to not come up with excuses to delay any movement in helping the economy. Senator Lee, do you have any questions to the gentlemen?
Sisius Massey, Mr. Chair. No questions, but just again, a comment. And I think I just want to reiterate that this bill and the previous one are results of the good work that we've done in the past in partnership with Guam Department of Labor and, at that time, the Calvill administration. They had suggested that we double the fee for alien labor for the H2B program, and that's exactly what we did. We were able to bring in approximately $4 million in new revenue. And, you know, that's something many people who sit in our seats are always kind of clamoring for, you know, ways to reduce spending or, you know, infuse our economy with additional money, and that's exactly what we did. And this is the fruits of that labor. So, again, I really want to thank you so much for your support of this measure. We're looking forward to hearing additional testimony from other community stakeholders. But at this time, again, I just want to impress upon the committee and on the public that it's very necessary that we continue to put these resources back towards developing our workforce, especially at a time when so many people are out of work. We want to make sure that we are able to retool and get them back on the job. So, we thank you so much for your support, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing this bill.
Thank you. Senator Shelton, do you have anything, ma'am?
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today, and to the Department of Labor. I know all of you are extremely busy right now with all of the programs that you're running. So, I do appreciate your time and your support for this legislation since we know that it'll go a long way to contributing to the overall mission of the Department of Labor. So, Sisius Massey for being here, for your input. And I'd also like to thank the author of the legislation for introducing this as companion legislation with Bill 289 and for allowing me to be a co-sponsor. Sisius Massey.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Telo. Ma'am?
Sisius Massey, Mr. Chair, and the opportunity to speak. Good afternoon, Gerard and Greg. Thank you so much for being here this morning and taking the time. And Greg, like the man I know, you're always diligent and working hard. You were on the phone talking, trying to get ahold of BBMR. That's something I know you would have done too. Yeah, and the oversight chair as well mentioned that we would look into it. But whatever funding is in there, you know, by law, this is what this fund is supposed to do, provide that revenue to you. I'm glad to hear that you mentioned, Greg, the military buildup or just the construction industry is still going strong regardless of the pandemic. So, we're looking at the revenue coming in here. And we noticed that because of... That the revenue is greater for you with regards to the funding, but with only 30... That's why when you mentioned that there should be a lot more money in there than the 30... I think it was $35,000 is what I put in. Yeah, $35,502 is the correct number, if you wanted to...
If I may, Senator, the $35,000 sounds like just our portion in this bill. Maybe they didn't look at GCC's portion, which is segregated differently on the AS400. I'm not sure.
Well, the BBMR clearly states that the approach... But the approach should be posted against the fund. It says as of February 2020. It said February of 2020. It said February of 2020. So, the year ending FY 2019 fund balance Manpower Development is estimated at $35,502. So, this, of course, was done in February 2020. So, there, a lot probably has happened, new audit. So, yeah, you're doing your due diligence and calling BBMR to find out, so.
Definitely, ma'am.
And it really is good to know, though, that the buildup is still moving, even with this pandemic going on, that I'm just worried about the classrooms, you know, getting the training needed and having to deal with that. It's probably slowing it down a bit with regards to the training out there. But I know that they're implementing new opportunities or the new norm in training that's happening out there. Again, I greatly appreciate you guys being here today and testifying in favor of this bill, a bill that justly and rightfully belongs to Department of Labor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tello. Senator Lee, do you have anything you want to close up on your bill before I make the closing remarks?
Yes, I just wanted to, again, clarify. And Greg, Mr. Massey is correct in that all these Manpower Development funds are divided between GCC, which gets the lion's share, 70%, and then 30% to the Guam Department of Labor. And that's the reason why Senator Shelton and I introduced these bills as companion legislation. She took care of the GCC portion. That's her oversight. And I took care of the Guam Department of Labor. But essentially, they're very, very similar bills. We're just taking these Manpower Development funds and appropriating them to their respective agencies. So, just wanted to clarify that. And again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Senator Shelton, for your co-sponsorship and Senator Taitiwi for being here today. This is a very, these are very, very important things that we need to be doing with our time. Again, reinvesting and talking about developing our workforce. And so, again, the Guam Department of Labor have been stalwart champions of that. And I want to thank them for their continued work in that area. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing the bill. Sizouz Masi.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Lee. And just to close up for Department of Labor, a shout out to the people applying for unemployment.